It's seven o'clock. We stand for the pleasure to call this meeting to order if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Public hearing town plan update. So we took public comment for the last meeting. The only real actionable item was to add on page fourteen a sewer rehab project to the timeline, which I did. And that was it.
Is there any comment from anyone or anybody in the public?
I was looking for the wrong... what is it that you added?
One of the things that we will do-
The last item on page fourteen, the 2023... is that what it says?
Sewer rehab project.
Sewer rehab project.
One of the things that the planning commission will do now is to accept the change. And we have to do that as well. And then we will be, which will be-
July 7th?
June 7th for us. June, no. No.
That's a Tuesday meeting.
No, it's for us, for the planning commission.
Oh.
So that'll be the 5th. And then we'll come back with that acceptance. So we'll be four days late, which ain't too awful hard to take, seeing as we were almost four years late last time.
It'll be the 11th for us.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm going to move on to the regular scheduled meeting, if that's okay with everyone?
That's okay.
Okay. Amendments to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add, under new business, a C liquor license approval and a D water plant roof.
Water plant roof repair, yeah.
Repair.
What was it for? Oh, the first one is liquor license, right?
Yeah, the second was water plant roof repair.
Yep. Everybody understand what we're doing? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you. All right. An approval of two sets of minutes may 14th first.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 14th as written. That's the special meeting.
No.
No, that's a regular meeting. The regular meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay.
We just had to make a note that that final approval for the town plan will be on the 11th. We approved it in this round, so.
Yeah, well, we have to do it twice. So that's good.
Twice is it?
No changes.
No changes then. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Upstaying.
Yep. And May 21st now.
I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of May 21st as written.
Second?
I'll second that also.
Additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Upstaying.
Yep.
All upstaying.
Thank you, guys. So it was unanimous. The three of us voted for it.
The three of you.
Yep. Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. Rose, I'm surprised.
Okay, so I have three things. First of all, I'd like to really recognize the immense amount of work that the DBW has been doing. Really impressed. I know not everything is perfect, but for the limited number of guys that we've got going, I think a lot has been getting done. On the news tonight, Rebecca Ballant was on the news. Apparently she's gotten a whole boatload of money to help with water plants for the state of Vermont. So I just thought I'd throw that out there and it might be something we could be looking into. And it was on Channel 4. My Champlain Valley was the station that I was watching when I saw.
It was also on Channel 3.
Was it? I don't... I'm just... And then the last thing. I guess I got confused at the special meeting because I was... We were discussing about the plan that Rich and I had been talking about, putting the median in. And then, I don't know, I missed something and next thing I know, the engineer is going to be trying to push back, take the plan that was submitted and just push back 10 feet. So I'm... I know I was there. One of the things I was there for was to see if the plan that Rich and I had been discussing and that I've been discussing with several other people was feasible, you know, measurement-wise. So I don't know how we got from discussing that and trying to get measurements for that to this thing where we're just pushing what we have already back 10 feet. Can-
It was kind of a consensus.
I think they're still working on that.
There's no real... the short answer is you're trying to get an answer and there is no answer right now. There's... they'll be looking... There'll be... we still have more discussions and I think more clarification-
They're looking at-
For them to look at those... to look at those.
They're looking at what can be done.
Right.
We don't... these are just ideas. They can tell us if they can do it.
Well, that's what I was there to find out.
And I think the second, the one you're talking about, just back 10 foot, I think that was kind of a compromise of the compromise of the compromise. I'm not sure how many compromises we got, but we've... that was just a fallback position if the other one didn't work. And there was some opposition to the one we were talking about, about that median strip. So I think that was a second.
What they are looking at, the measurements.
They're looking at whatever they can do. The... within reason, I guess we need to understand that everything we do at this point is a change order.
And it's going to cost us.
And it's going to cost us. And if we end up not doing anything, then the cost that we lay on the engineers has got to be paid and that'll be paid by us. So that's where we're at.
But it is... I just, for some reason, I got the impression at the end that that was the only thing, the pushing the back.
No, I think she took notes on both of those, but we can call and make sure.
There was... my understanding is that there's... but there's a lot more than that. There's even the discussion before you... there's a discussion around that. In a discussion, do you even do it? And there are dollars and everything else. There's a lot more to happen before. And even finding funding.
So the third, I guess, this would be the fourth meeting, probably isn't going to be the decision-making meeting that it was originally supposed to be. The decision-making meeting is going to be... We'll probably have one more meeting to discuss their findings before we make any... have meetings.
We'll probably have a meeting during the select board meeting to discuss that. I don't think we'll do a special meeting unless we get an immense amount of information that needs to be hashed out. So, yeah, you know, we'll keep you posted. It's not going to happen tomorrow. And it's... I mean, we're waiting for a lot of information to come back from Rotten Regional and from the engineer group. So until we see that, we're not going to move.
Right.
John?
Just a quick little thing, kind of piggybacking on her. With the median idea, would it be cost-effective to just put barrels out as a mock type of what could be happening?
There was some talk about that.
It'd be a lot cheaper to just remove the barrels than have to repaint everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we would-
Just to see how the traffic would react to it and how the ebb and flow goes. I mean, it would cost nothing. I'm sure you got to go up by barrels that you can just stick out there.
Yeah, we would... if... I think yes, and it would absolutely be a good idea because if they find that there's enough room for turnaround, that ideally, we thought maybe even a loading zone on the inside edge of the curb of that particular thing. But it has everything to do with there's room.
And just one more quick thing. Coming down North Main Street in front of Dollar General, just putting a stop sign there. So that way, North Main heading south is the only traffic that stops. Because with the crosswalks, everyone's going to be paying attention. You know as well as I do, you get in front of the bank, you're already looking at the town hall. You're not paying attention to the traffic.
If you wait long enough, even you and I will agree. Because that's my... I think that's what I... I would like to do that, too. But nobody else likes-
Does you remove that yield over there and you make that 22 a straight through there? Bank North Main, just that one stop by the memorial, right as you... you know where you're talking?
Right across from the library, yeah.
Exactly. And that's the only stop you'd have?
Well, we're in the minority on that, I will tell you that.
At least we can agree on something.
You still my heart?
I'm shocked.
Thank you all.
I shocked myself. You found something there.
Go ahead.
Last time I was here, I asked about the open house upstairs. Because we had talked about, I guess this goes back to the town meeting, that the rec director and I saw that they're looking for people to fill the position. And upstairs would be a beautiful place. Last week I asked about it and hoping at the last meeting that potentially it could have been an open house during spring fling with all the people there. And you said, Mr. Richards, that there was a lot of clutter, which I understand. It's a busy time of the year and there's a lot of things up there. My question, though, as a precursor to that, I haven't seen and I've looked for a posted certificate of occupancy. Now, I don't know if that would come from Jill Adams, the building inspector, or the fire inspector out of Rutland. Is there a fire certificate of occupancy?
Usually they're given through the zoning administrator, but I'm not sure if we need one, to be honest with you. And I don't know one way or the other.
Because I know that, like, when you go to a restaurant, they usually have in the glass casing, you know, maximum occupancy, 120 people or whatever it is. Being a public place of gathering.
Yeah, I-
Do you know has one been applied for? Do you know?
They're fully permitted, Olivia.
That's a certificate of occupancy.
Town Hall is fully permitted.
So where is that posted? I've looked for it and I haven't seen it. If you have the certificate of occupancy, it's usually by the entrance, which I haven't seen it posted.
We'll have to find out if we actually need to have one because we're a municipal thing, but I don't know. We'll find out.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you could post that-
We may not have.
...to the maximum capacity also.
Yep.
And how are things coming along with the clutter for an open house?
We're working on it, but here's the deal. We have so many summer projects that our town guys are involved in. It's very difficult to get them... it's a rainy day kind of thing.
Yeah, no, Mr. Gunter was saying earlier about community service for those with the vandalism and, you know, things like that. Perhaps that's something working in conjunction with Chief Humphries. You know, if you do something down at the playground as a community service, I'm not going to say look the other way, but as you did something against us, not just something for us, perhaps Mr. Gunter could work with the parents and have them... well, I mean, that would work hand in hand because if whoever it is works for community service upstairs, they'd be working for their own community center. You see what I'm saying? It would be for, like, an initiative.
Right.
Rather than go down the playground and vandalize, why don't you go to the community center? We've got the rec director coming. So that would be an ideal thing to work at.
Well, that also requires the chief of police to actually follow up with the parents that don't bring the children and Mr. Gunter to follow up with Chief Humphries to make sure that this is actually happening.
I mean, that would be a win-win situation. The kids are, or really, I shouldn't say kids, but the individuals. The individuals who did whatever they did would then have a place to go to use the energy in a positive way. You know, and the-
We're looking into-
Yeah, the clutter would be gone and we could have an open house hopefully in the next month. And I mean, you'll check on the certificate of occupancy.
Yep, yep.
And if it's needed, Mr. Gunter said we have it. It can be posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We will move on. Department head reports. You're it.
Let's start with the police. So we had 91 traffic violations, municipal traffic violations, 683 for the year, 31 written warnings, two parking violations and three car crashes over the last couple of weeks, two arrests, and we did two sets of civilian fingerprints.
Oh, these two?
I'll give you the sheet there. Just in the last two weeks, we've seen 186 calls for service, which I broke that down. It's about 14 days. That's 13 calls a day, which just about a little more than one call an hour, right? So it's... our officers are just running, trying to keep up. That's what I got for the PD. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
From the town manager's office, since we are coming down to the end of the fiscal year, which is next month, the end of next month, I want to just give the board an update. All of the budgets are looking great. Our expenditures have been come down. Our O-1-O is at 92% spent, 92.3%, I'm sorry, 92.8%. We should be at 92.3. So we're like half a percent over where we should be. So we're right there. Highway, they're underspent right now. They're going to do our paving, so we'll see that number come up pretty sharply in the next couple of weeks. But they're doing really good. Sewer is under budget and water is a little over budget by about 2%. They'll finish a little over and that is directly impacted by the water line. Right? We had guys out there for what, 26 hours, plus the equipment from the... Yeah. So numbers are looking great. Other things to think about, roadside mowing started today. The crews, they're going to have the mower for the next about week and a half, then they're getting it back the first week of July here in Fairhaven. Runway was graded. The RC Flyers called. They were very pleased with what happened down there. They said, "Thank you."
Thank you for what?
Grading the runway.
Looks good up there. They hung up today, checked it out.
We're still looking for a representative to the rescue squad. I did post to Facebook today. I didn't get any hits, at least not to my office. The rec director was posted. I do have four applicants so far. I talked to the state, Mr. Greenough. They're coming through to do the Class 1 and Class 2 line striping, though they didn't give me a date. They do not do the fog lines, the white lines on the side. They'll only do the center line for us. Part of the state contract. We get it for free, but they don't do the white line.
It's a white line. Half-free, half-done.
Do they include the lane lines?
The yellow line.
Only the yellow lines?
Just the center.
They won't do the lanes?
The fog line.
No, I'm not talking about those lines. I'm talking about in front of Derfies and then down by River Street.
The turn to Liberty and the turn to-
The non-lanes, thank you.
The turnways.
That's on us. And we have that scheduled coming this year, too. Yeah.
Well, we were waiting for the paving to come through and I didn't want to waste the money. It's expensive to do line paint.
We could lean into strengths and whoever vandalizes can get a can of spray paint and we can get the fog lines.
Get the roll out.
Brush.
Right on.
So if you're cruising around town, you see our friend Joe Dayton planted some flowers. We thank him for that. Over on the bridge, there's some nice planters. Unfortunately, somebody smashed the planters over at the bus stop. Yeah, it happens. Paving work begins next week. You'll see West Park is going to be milled. That's going to give our guys time to set the curbs and make sure the manholes are where they need to be, the right height. I'm sorry.
On the park side?
West Park. West Park Place, yep. And then they'll start paving. There's a lot of paving downtown. So they're doing West Park, they're doing the parking lot, they're doing Maple, they're doing Liberty. We might be doing Marvel, too. I got to check to check and see where we're at with that.
Does that on West Park include previous discussion of inserting more parking?
The new parking.
See, they have to turn that up, deal the curbing out. Okay.
Yeah, but they excavated it and that'll be paved.
Excellent.
And Friday is today? Friday, we got Green Mountain Safety coming out. So this is the... I call it fake BOSHA. They're going to come out and look at our facilities to see what, you know, what we can do to just be a little bit safer. For our projects, lights-
Are they connected to BOSHA?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
They give us... they'll give us a packet of things that need to be fixed and we need to fix it or then they send the big dog.
98 or something.
Yeah. And they're great to work with.
It's called Project Work Safe.
Oh, Project Work Safe.
Yep.
Not Green Mountain Work... not Green Mountain Safety. Thank you. No real updates on our projects, except for the light poles. They did kick our light poles back to the 21st.
21st to June?
21st to June.
In the park?
For the park.
Lights, is this June 21st?
June 21st.
Ooh, the day after the first concert.
Yes.
That's good, though. They'll have it done for you.
It'll be late till nine o'clock.
Well, they should have it done next week.
I know. It'd be nice.
But what do you do? And that... that's what I got for you. Yeah, that's what I got for you. Oh, no, that's not what I got for you. I could use a little guidance on this one. FEMA awarded the town money to do a study for Scotch Hill Road. If you remember, we're going to use $50,000 of paving to get that done. The state gave us $200,000 to pave it and put in a culvert. I don't know if we need the FEMA money anymore. So.
Don't give it back. There's always... $200,000 won't get us from the town line to Stewart.
That $50,000 just for a study, right?
It was a study, yeah.
Well, I think you've got...
We don't... why do we... if we've got the money to fix the problem, why are we studying it anymore?
That's what I'm saying. So we would study it to get-
That money can't be used for Vermont, too.
Well, hang on just a second here. Let's just... just food for thought here. I thought that one, if I remember right, back when we were having that discussion, that was going to be to do Scotch Hill Road, not just the problem, but the swamp.
It would be the whole... it would study the entire road.
The entire road. Cross, culverts, everything we needed.
Be nice to have that.
Get it priced on, doing that road right. So we may still want to do that.
I drove that the other day and that's the worst it's ever been. I mean, not bad.
Or what are you recommending? You're saying, "Don't study from the interstate on up through even the..." I mean, we're going to... can we do the whole thing with the money we've got? Are you saying you don't need the money because we can do it all?
Well, this is just going to... this is just going to study it. It will unlock money later because we've done FEMA's study, but-
I'd say stay, keep it, do it. Let us get free engineering. My thoughts. I don't like we give it back.
I mean, we're doing approximately 400 feet of how many miles do we have? Two, two. So.
About three and a half miles.
Exactly. I mean, there's some ditching, there's some banks that should be trimmed back to get the water to go down through there in a proper way. I think it's a needed project.
At least we get a plan.
Are we spending... I'm a little confused. Did we have $250,000? What's the money that we have?
The state gave us 200.
$200,000. $200,000 should do more than 400 feet.
With the culvert?
Yeah, it's going to raise the road and do a culvert. It's going to do however many feet from pole to pole. How many feet are between poles?
So we're going to use... see, I'm just trying to find... we're going to use all that money for 400 feet to put the culvert, raise the road, but it still leaves the rest of Scotch Hill as a bloody mess.
That takes the road out of the swamp is what that money does.
Right. So then, and every year we put in... I got to ask the question here for that grant, the highway transportation grant for that road. I take it we didn't get it again this year?
They haven't made a decision yet.
I think they're waiting for the budget to be finalized.
Okay. I'm just...
It's a Class 2 grant that everybody-
A Class 2 grant? Now, I thought that was... what were we asking for, for money there?
Was it 375?
Yeah.
275?
And it wasn't going to do... it was only going to do, we did a little bit ourselves up there. But it was the rest... you probably stop where we're fixing the dip in the road. You start up down the road and start coming back and you... if we're lucky, we're going to meet the place where we ended up. And that'll still leave us... I'm just trying to figure out what I want this grant if I take it. What I want them to really look at the closest. And we were losing the road from the interstate up to where we started paving. You haven't looked at the sides of that road and every... we're losing the rest of the road. It's almost going to be as bad as what it is in the other-
What that study should give us is priorities and what's needed most, what's needed, you know, and then we make an executive decision on how we spend that money, how we are able.
We would have a shovel-ready project at that point.
That's very true.
If we did the study.
So what you recommend... so you're recommending that we do this or not do this?
I would give the money back.
See, that's why I-
And I get what everybody's saying, but at the end of the day, it's going to be paved and it's going to be ground and, you know. We're going to mill it, we're going to-
You're saying it's going to be paved, it's going to be ground. But that's not going to build a road back there if we don't get a ditch to drain. We're still going to be in bad shape down the road. Okay?
My thoughts.
I'm just trying to be honest here.
Well, I agree, but is this... do we need this study to tell us that?
No, but we may get... we may get-
Right, but if we do the study, that will open up potentially more funding for us. And we've gone through this, these hoops that'll hopefully give us priority for this Class 2 grant or any other grant. I mean, the problem is you guys have been dealing with this for years and nobody from the state's come down and... Which is ridiculous. You get two major state parks that go off that road. Your options is Scotch Hill or Creek Road. And I would rather tow a camper over Scotch Hill, even though the condition is versus Creek Road.
And most people do.
But year after year, the state ignores it. And it's bad. I mean, we don't have to tell you that, but I went up it the other day and that was... I'm almost about to stay off of that and how bad that is. I mean-
The thing that, for me, is if we get the FEMA, we're getting the basic engineering that we don't have to pay for, that we don't have to siphon off a grant that we might get down the road. It's already there, the plan's there. We could use that as a template for what we should do and when we should do it. I don't see... the thing about that kind of a grant is if we give it back, somebody else is going to use it. It's not like it's going to save us all tax money. It's not the way it works. It's just somebody else has, you know, less fear of spending tax money.
How quickly could we get an engineering study done? What's a-
Uh, maybe... and I'm just... this is a rough spitball. You know, I don't know what everybody's looking like. 18 months? Two years, maybe, depending on what it looks like? Nothing moves fast.
And we can build up that section of Scotch Hill with that $200,000 as well before that, right?
This year. This year, spring.
This year.
I need to wait for the wetland permits to come through, so that, it's, movement's all contingent on wetland.
Does, does the FEMA money, uh, become null if we do repairs to the road as is? I'm just thinking.
That I don't know.
We can move forward, do what we need to do with that two hundred thousand dollars, and then just come up with a long-term plan for the entire road with that engineering study.
That's what I'm thinking. That's exactly what I'm thinking. We're not gonna, it's not gonna foul up. They'll say, good start, here's what else you gotta do. Rose?
I'm just wondering what Joe's reasoning is to give the money back.
So we're using fifty thousand dollars of, of paving funds as match for this?
Oh, you didn't say that.
See, see, there's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's costing us, see.
Yeah, there's a match, there's a fifty thousand dollar match for this.
Everyone's talking here like it's free money.
Yeah, not free money.
I don't think anyone's realizing, it's not free money.
I'm sorry, Bob. I, I thought that was implied.
About that. That's a whole different subject.
What you see, you pay.
Change the subject.
Yeah, what you.
Costs us fifty thousand dollars to get this money.
To, to get the money.
So it's a fifty percent match?
No, we would get a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
At that point, I'm.
Fifty thousand dollars is basically what we spent, what you saw that got paved up there? That we, that we did the worst of it? That was about fifty thousand, I think, that we spent up there. That's the kind of money you're gonna have to pull back just to get a study and you haven't put a piece of pavement down.
Yeah, and that changes my mind considerably.
That's, so, I, I, and I, I understand.
I thought it was a fifty thousand.
That we've, that we've.
You owe a grant.
No, I'm sorry.
And the reason you do a study is, is to hope that you get a grant out there.
What's everybody?
We don't need a study to know we have to do ditches and clean the ditches.
What's everybody's consensus on that?
Listen, my background, I know the ditching needs to be done.
Right.
I know the trees need to be cut back, and we've always gotta keep our moan. That's three major things you have to do. If you take care of them things, the roads will take care of themselves a lot of the time.
To continue to move on though.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, if we wanna do that this way, spend that fifty thousand on paving and pave another section of Scotch Hill this year. Get up there and do the ditching in that area, so it'll stay.
Yep, so why don't we run away?
Uh, if we do it that way, I'm in total agreement with this.
I'm with you.
So the, the idea is not to, not to take the FEMA grant?
I, I don't wanna tie, I don't wanna tie fifty thousand dollars on another stuff.
Moving on.
I'd rather see it on the paving, out there on the road.
I agree with you.
Yep.
Dude, you need, you need a motion, or you just?
Uh, no, if they ask for, I can always supply them.
Okay.
Consensus of the board. What else you got?
Wait, wait, the consensus of the board is?
Not to accept the FEMA grant.
We're gonna send the FEMA grant back.
That's all we have today.
Okay. That's it, that's all. Uh, old business sale of River Street, sixteen River Street.
So we received a petition to stop the sale of sixteen River Street, uh, to Mr. Sayers. Uh, to move forward with the sale, we need to bring this to the voters. I need guidance from the board on, on when, if you wanna, if you, number one, if you wanna have an election, then let the voters decide. And then, when you wanna do that.
Do we have?
You have, you have to let the voters vote it. If we wanna have it so.
We, in order to sell the property, we have to have the election by statute, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's given, we'll have an election.
What, this week is school board election.
We have to warn it.
Okay, nevermind that.
The next school board election.
The next.
Two weeks. That's sad, but, yeah.
As soon as possible?
As soon as possible to get it.
June, June, July? I'll work with the, I, so I've never had to deal with, uh, a special election like this, so I'll work with the lawyers to make sure of it.
And the town clerk should have some insight.
I, and, and all I ask is I, that as soon as possible, but there's enough elections going on between primary and, not only, there may, there may be another school board. There's a primary election in August. There's, in November, that, that's, that's not as soon as possible. But there's, I try to, if we can, take advantage of, they've already got people working in the polls and we're not paying for another.
So the next, the next round of that would be.
That's all.
Is the, is the primary, whatever day that is.
So, warn it as soon as possible, and if there's another election happens to come along, so excited in there, can we do that?
We have to say when we're gonna have it. So you, you, we could wait until the next meeting, which is when? The primary's probably the one for sure we're gonna have, the election in August.
Well, let me talk to the lawyer, we'll see what the timeline looks like and maybe, and then we can just.
See, see what the plan is, is we getting the information.
I think it is, yes.
It's probably thirty days. Okay, so.
Table, until we get some more info.
Okay, um.
You want?
Table.
Oh, table.
Well, right, we're tabling the sale.
To next meeting or?
Yeah, till, till we get some more information, which will be the next meeting, which is.
You were, you were basically, did you get what you were looking for? Like basically some direction of, do we wanna do it sooner than later, or were you looking for more?
I will bring, I will bring the earliest date possible. And then the board can decide from there what they wanna do, right?
Okay.
Cause it's all contingent on the warning.
Okay.
May I just suggest that you wait and see if the school budget goes?
We, we can do two concurrently, we gotta do work.
We, we won't be able to make a, a warning until we vote for it in the next me, next meeting, which is June eleventh, so we will know.
It should be.
And we should know if they're yea or nay on that, I hope. We should. Okay, everybody all right, everybody's? Uh, the Lake Bomazene herbicide discussion.
So at the last meeting, I think it was, the, the board asked for a letter to be, to be drafted and then sent to the, uh, to the courts. And then I think I was asked to make the town, what do you call that? We become party to the, to the, yeah, we, so the town does have party status, so writing a letter doesn't. Okay. It's superfluous to the process.
Well, we can, if we have to, we can comment. Are we are, are we officially, um, deemed to be part of that?
Yes, we have party status and there's a hearing.
We do.
Bear with me while I find, July eighth. There's a notice of appearance for July eighth for the herbicide discussion.
All right, so we don't have to do anything except that reiterate what we had, what we had done before, which is the letter. We don't have to do anything else unless there's somebody on the board that wants to change that decision, wants to work.
We don't really have to do anything, though. If we have party status already, what if we just, a simple note saying we haven't changed our mind?
Exactly, I mean, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we don't need our lawyer to go there and sit there at all.
No, I'll probably just go to that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if anybody, I mean, if anybody, if anybody has any different points of view, we should hear them tonight. If not, we will go with where we were in the last, the last board, which was, um, not, not happy about doing it. Not happy about it, and agreeing with, actually agreeing with the state in their, their ruling that said that we can't apply. Right now, it's, um, one individual, actually a town, a town guy, um, Mr. Waterhouse, who is, uh, who is, um, appealing the ruling from the state. I mean, if, if that's the case, I would just say that unless anybody's got anything else to say, then hold, forever hold your peace. So, the direction would be that we, we haven't changed our minds.
Reiterate.
Right.
So, just to be clear here, by not changing your mind, you're agreeing with the decision?
Yes.
So you do not support?
We do not support the, the appeal.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody to say that?
Yeah.
This can get a little complicated.
Right, right, and I think it might be confused with those minutes. We, the decision we made in twenty twenty-two is the same today as it was then. It's documented very well in the letter. That we are, we do not support putting whatever they call that chemical into Lake Bomazene.
I got one.
Okay, right.
Okay.
I'd say that's a simply corporate way to do it.
Yep, okay.
And that way, there's more confusion.
But the decision was made in January twenty-two.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's when that letter referred to.
In the letter, the date on that letter. Just when we made the decision.
Three twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Nothing's changed.
Okay, we will move on. Okay, we have a fence installation, I think we gotta pay for it.
Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, so I, I know there was, with the rec, with the new rec committee, there's always a lot of discussion about what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. But, how we're gonna pay for it never lands in the minutes. So, if we want to spend money out of the, um, playground and recreation maintenance fund, I, I don't have authority to spend that money. I need to ask the board to, for permission. I do, to spend six thousand five hundred dollars out of that.
Can we, do you want the not to exceed the full amount, or give you the, or you know what the exact amount is?
I, I got the exact amount after I sent that, so six thousand five hundred.
Six thousand five hundred?
Make a motion to expend six thousand five hundred dollars for fences at the playground, field.
Out of the, uh?
Out of the parks and rec.
Parks and rec.
Maintenance.
Mike, second that. Everybody understand what we're doing? Have you seen it? It looks pretty good down there. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Uh, we have some liquor licenses. Or liquor license, just, just the ones, the American Legion.
I got them. Got it. We ready? I'll make a motion to approve an outside consumption permit for the American Legion Post forty-nine.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. One more.
And I'll make a motion to approve an outside, it's still an outside consumption permit, for the Fair Haven Inn doing business as Laramia's Family Enterprises LTD.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll give you my votes.
I have that, thank you.
Okay, that was the easy one. Now, talk to us about the roof.
Yeah, now there's, now there's the money, so, um, the roof, so the water plant has a rubber roof that started leaking, uh, like last year, late last summer, early winter. Two years ago?
I think so.
Two years ago. Um, and that work is being done now, they're almost done. But as they were working on the roof, they noticed the, if you look at the building, there's a fascia up on the top that goes around. It's stones kinda pressed into a board, so it's pretty heavy. And it's all started to kinda peel off the top. And the workers, they were afraid that there's, it's just gonna start buckling and folding and falling off the building. So he recommended, um, I asked, well, can you reattach it? He's like, you can, but, you know, with all the construction work going on, why would we just kinda cob it together and hold it back up there? So, uh, he recommended doing a, um, a metallic, uh, piece around the top. And that would cost an additional twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Which would come out of the, uh, sinking water?
Water capital improvement fund.
Capital improvement. How much is in there now?
There is currently two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three, minus the hundred and ten for the roof. So there's, yeah.
So is he gonna go all the way around the building with this new metal flashing?
He's gonna replace all of it. Makes sense.
It does.
Might as well. That'll be good for the rest of its life. You don't have to worry about it falling off or anything.
I entertain your motion.
So you're looking for a motion for that, right?
I am.
Make a motion to spend twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars for the water plant roof fascia replacement. How do you like that?
Sounds good.
To come from the water capital.
To come from the water capital improvement, thank you, I.
The auditors will get.
Okay, to come from the water capital improvement.
I'll second that also.
All those, all right, everyone understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye. All opposed? Yeah, that would be crazy not to do that.
Right, or I spend a hundred and ten thousand on a roof, you might as well just, what's another, four, two thousand on top for this?
It's only money. It's the right, it's good money.
That's a necessary, that's a necessary.
That's right. All right, uh, water and sewer budget review begins. So, why don't we do water and see where we get? Um. Everybody had a chance to look at this? So.
Are we going line by line or just raising questions?
Um, we can go line by line and raise the questions at, at each individual account if you want.
Okay, let's do that.
Could, could, is there a general over? The, the top you want before the line fall in, or you?
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Is there a general, when, when you're gonna do water? And I know you said earlier something to the effect of, and I'm a big line by line person, but, I just wanna make sure. Because water, it sounded like is, went up, you said earlier, a little bit.
It did.
And the percentage it went up was how much?
Uh, water, water's up seven, seven point eight, seven point eight-four.
Seven point eight-four, okay, I'll, I'll put eight-four down here, cause this one must've been updated. And, and, and the reason I wanted it is because, okay, so, and that increase was primarily because of the? What?
Oh, okay.
See, without, without going line by line, we, we can, but I'm saying, if, if we only had a, a couple places that, otherwise it'd fill right in.
So we.
Go ahead.
We, uh, we seen thirty thousand dollar increase to the, to capital improvement, which that was zeroed out. Um, that was, that was the biggest, biggest bump. We did see an increase to workers' comp, which really nothing we can do about. Retirement also saw a bump because of VEMRs. Machinery and equipment, that's, that's up a hundred percent, so, so from seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand, that saw a big bump. Repairs and maintenance saw a two thousand dollar increase. A, a lot of it, honestly, a lot of it is, is reserve funds and, and insurance. We, we could find some savings, I think, in the, in some of the equipment lines and, and reserve funds, but, um, the benefits are, are, they are what they are. And those are actuals, cause the VLCT sent them to me.
And the reason I wanted to listen to that is cause a year ago, sat here in June, going through water and sewer. And the major concerns in the increase were the price of chemicals. And I didn't hear anywhere that we had an issue with chemicals. That's a good thing.
We've been operating supply in water lines of, uh, it's a thousand dollars. You know.
It was a big percentage, but not a ton of money.
Right, yeah.
Ray, you need those supplies.
See, and, and in this meeting, I thought this was the first meeting and we're, and we're gonna talk, to get into line by line, I want Mike sitting there and I want Carrie sitting there. And I would like answers from, from them when I get into line by line.
Carrie, Carrie sent me a message, uh, she said that she wouldn't be at twice me, cause she's the assistant, just like Ward and Benson. But she said if you had any questions on the budget, she'll answer them best she can by email or at the next meeting. And then she said the budget she prepared is three percent higher than the one being presented, is what she sent me.
And, and sewer, I thought her first pass showed that. And, and sewer, I thought our first pass showed that sewer was being much more efficient and was actually coming in under budget, so I wanna understand why we're increasing.
Right, that, that's what she sent me and that's what I'm passing out to you.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying for the, for the first pass, we, we can go down and do anything you want.
I get it.
Mr. Chair, but I, but I mean, I'm very reluctant to make without the people who are actually running the plants and looking them in the eye, I see.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot, I mean, in the water, we could lower the reserve account. You know, so, and a little bit of supply, but, and hers is up now, if.
I, I was looking for sewer to stay basically level, quite frankly, coming in here, and water, and, and if we were even more efficient to give, our, our taxpayers, when they start talking water and sewer.
Their necessity, we need them.
We, we need them, but we, the, the feeling, and we have to help people understand if that's the case, is that we pay quite a bit right now for water and sewer. Wanna make sure that that money. It looked, it looked this year on the first pass, when I looked at this right here, that we shouldn't be doing much to increase either one of those. If we do this year, I, I wanna understand that, why, what we're.
And I agree, my biggest thing, and I even asked this down politely, is, so like you track what your water usage is, and you just assume that what you're taking is what's going out. But this time of year, you're watering gardens, so you're not, like I, I've always found it weird that you don't track kind of what's going out either. So I, I'm lucky, I got my own septic, and I'm glad I do, that I'm just on town, because I've seen people complain about what their water.
Sewer's always more.
Yeah, and I just, I never understood why you never track what went out, they just always just assume whatever you use, but.
They track everything.
No, you don't, you don't, you don't track what's going out.
You don't track sewer, you take and do a calculation based on the water.
Right, right, so this time of year, you're filling pools, you're watering gardens, you know, I'm not gonna sit there, like my wife was playing with my dog for 20 minutes and letting the water out, and I'm like, stop!
There's an ability for townspeople, if they fill the pools.
Right.
They could, they can get with the water people and get a, meet a reading and then afterwards as well. But watering gardens is a little.
Right, no, right, you're not gonna be like, oh, I watered my garden for 10 minutes, I'd like, you know, whatever, that many gallons of water taken off. But just food for thought, we're talking, you know, saving money or whatever, but I just always found it weird that we never, nobody ever tracks that, they just go off of what your use.
And, and, right, and the only reason, and I thought, like, this was first look at the budget, and some of these discussions, like, for example, that 7%, 7.8% increase. How much revenue are we generating in water, and if we're not, then, you know, we have it on our agenda item to talk about our, our revenue generation, even though we call it tax stabilization, but it's revenue generation. They're saying, okay, I'm, we're looking for a budget for next year, if 7% is there, what do we gotta do to get that down closer to 4%, not, not 7%? And.
What's, um, first and foremost, think about what is inflation at this point? It's around 4%.
No, it's, inflation is on, it read on 3.2, 3.3.
Still three, so if we're down to four, if we get, if we were able to get it down to four, then there's some studying that has to be done on this, and, and maybe it is appropriate that we don't look at it, because I'm not sure, that's a level funded budget. That's a level funded budget.
What I also wanna do is, can I? Is the ledger that I just got, I wanna see, so we're, we're coming in this year, what I just heard earlier tonight was that we're coming in pretty well with our budgets. If we're coming in with, pretty well with our budgets, uh, I'm trying to understand, we're not coming in over our water and over our sewer budget, why?
I think it's obvious, we're putting 30,000 in the, in the reserve account, that's the biggest nut to crack. And that's, and that's, that's probably, that's a huge amount of it, and whatever else is retirement and.
Hear me out, and, and my logic is saying, I, because I believe in capital reserve accounts and capital investment, also got a brand, pretty much brand new sewer plant. That I showed them after, no, I know, but we, they, they both come up, the bill comes in one. So we can, we'll talk them individual, but I'm saying, that one right there, I don't expect any increase out of
You didn't go.
Out of sewer. In water, the major things that we've had to do in water, we've got the roof going on, and it's, it's paid for. We, we did some major electrical upgrades, I'm just trying to say, why would I spend 7.8% more for water, right now I haven't seen that I'm there, and, and it would, and if I'm, if I'm not running over the budget, I, I haven't looked at that general ledger to see where I am right now, but I, I'm.
Well, let's, let's.
I think we have an opportunity here, I do, no different than anyone else at the table, to minimize the water and sewer.
I think you need the department heads here to.
And I don't, and I don't feel comfortable having that discussion without looking them in the eye, and they can tell me, Glenn, you're crazy, we absolutely need this right here for this reason. Okay, that's a good discussion, but that's a discussion we do with the department heads here, it's not done by process.
I think one item on that, though, that is regardless of department head being here, is the, the capital improvement fund for water.
That's purely on us.
And, and I think about, how much did that catastrophe cost us at the end of the day, when the water line broke?
I don't remember the exact number. Like 35 or 37,000.
It wasn't cheap.
And we're, we're zeroed out on that reserve fund?
No, I thought capital improvement had over $200,000, you told us.
That was, well, that was the water, I'm sorry, you're right.
Just, at least the, the, when we just spent 22,000, I was told it was over 200,000.
Okay.
There's 200,000 less than one hand, and they're going.
And I'm all for putting money into capital improvement reserve, when you tell me what I'm reserving for. What, what's the, yeah, but, okay, are you, what exactly, are you looking for the dam to blow out or the main water line coming out of, in the bottom, because you can't put enough money. You're, you're gonna be bonding something like that.
All right, let's, let's not.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that the discussion right now, first time looking at the, the budget and talking about it, should be just, what do you think? I like the idea when chances, hey, look, it's important to me about, about the capital reserves and making sure that they're funded. And I, and I don't disagree with you, we have to make sure they're funded, uh, but at, at the same time, okay, we've put quite a bit of money in both of, in the last two to three years, just need to understand.
What conditions are our water lines in, how, how old are our water lines here in town?
We have a, we have a plan, and we are aware on that plan, we've done the most critical.
They've been lined or replaced.
Replaced.
Replacing them.
The, the most recent is the one.
The most difficult one.
The one coming up prospect, up Main Street, that was next on the list, and we're, the town's staying pretty steady with, you know, with the plan. They're, but they're old.
Right, well, yeah, and we've been relining some of them next town over, just to, because we've had a lot of leaks and stuff in them and.
Well, let's not beat ourselves to death over this, let's, the, the other thing to understand is June 11th and June, or is it the 11th? Yeah, the 11th and 18th are the last two meetings we have for, before we have to make a decision, so.
Yeah, like, I'd like them to roll to your next meeting.
I would, I would, my, my feeling, without getting into another discussion, but I, you're gonna have to give me a, a lot of reasons why we shouldn't put money into that reserve account.
I think we should have a reserve fund too.
So I, I mean, I'll listen.
I understand, I, and, and I understand where I come from, I think we pay way too much right now for water and sewer, and anything we do, and every year, for the last five years, I've seen this increase, increase, increase. And quite, quite frankly, I think we pay, we gotta find, and if that answer is, then we're not working hard enough trying to get revenue from water. I saw an email that came out that said that there's about two or three companies interested in buying both water, why aren't we selling them that water? Why, I, why, why aren't we bringing more reserves in so that you can put that money in the cap? I'm just, I'm not saying you don't need it for capital, I'm saying I don't think we're doing the best we can on water and sewer.
You have to sell some water.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's move on, because we're not gonna talk to those guys until next time. Invite them both to be around.
They were invited tonight, but they both had previous engagements.
Okay, well, tell them to make sure their engagements are.
Are here next time?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, and then tax stabilization is not the right word, we were gonna come up with a different word.
I thought that was our revenue generation, everyone looks at that and thinks.
I think the email said that's what it was on.
Oh, yeah, I, I, it's a, it's.
Generation, it sounds like.
It makes everybody think we're talking about a tax stabilization for either solar or business. It, it's confusing, and so then, then we've got everyone thinking revenue.
Revenue generation and.
So now you, you bring up, you said in that email, there was a couple of companies, so you have the information on who these companies are and?
Mike has, Mike has them, and it's, the state of Vermont was one of them, the state of Vermont wants to use the, they wanna tap our water to wash bridges, so.
They wash all the bridges.
Replace one on Adam Street while they're at it, too.
Yeah. Wash it, wash it first and then replace it.
Yes.
That would be, that would be a good idea, but I, I would, I would like them to take the water before, if they're just washing bridges, take the water before we treat it, why waste all that chemical? If there's a way to do that. You know? I would, there is a way to get to that, all they gotta do is fill their tanks up.
Can you charge as much for it if it's not treated? I mean, the treatment process really isn't.
We can just siphon off water from the lake and.
I don't know why, I hate to, I hate to shoot a hole in it, but I mean, why waste the chemical if all they're gonna do is wash bridges?
At the end of the day, if I pay this much for the water with the chemicals in it, and I'm charging this much, and I'm making that much, I won't let it stop me, I just wanna generate revenue.
Right.
That's, it's all about the money. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if the state's using it, you're paying taxes on it anyway.
I've already bought it, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna turn around and charge me again, but we're generating, I'm not, I'm not taking and charging the taxpayers.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in who the other ones are, and, yeah, if we've got the water, sell it.
Definitely got one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the list.
Anything else? If not, we're moving on. Transfer station operation, is there any movement there or whatever?
Oh, that's, that's a good thing to pick up on, um, June, so it's coming on time where the, the transfer station stickers are gonna expire and you have to have a new one. The new ones are pink, I believe, like a neon pink.
I call it magenta.
There's a magenta sticker this year.
I have one on, on my truck right now.
I got one on mine already.
I got one on my wall.
I was, I was the number three sticker.
Go ahead of me somewhere.
I hope it's number one, it's in my office. Yeah, I'm thinking about raffling it for, for revenue generation.
Whatever it takes.
Um, so on the Saturday, the 22nd, I'll be down there selling stickers, Nate's gonna find me some help on the 29th, to also be down to sell stickers. After, starting July 1st, though, you gotta have a sticker.
And it'll be 10 dollars instead of seven.
Instead of seven, and then you're gonna be mad when Jim tells you, I'm sorry, you can't dump your garbage today because you don't have a sticker, so. The 22nd and the 29th, we'll have staff down there selling stickers right at the transfer station, right at the gate.
Will we replace stickers if someone purchases a new vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a policy around that.
Yeah, there is, and I think it's, I think it's, usually they can get that sticker off and re-put it right on your new vehicle.
Not very easily.
No, but I've, I've done it on a couple of different vehicles.
I have a little tip for that, when you put your new sticker on, leave a little bit of that paper on the back hanging out.
So you.
You can, it peels right off.
So nice, yeah.
I've seen where people just take a little piece of epoxy and sticker it to that, and then stick that in the window.
That works. Only get up with four different cars in a week. But it is important to do that, there's a, there's a $7 charge that goes to 10 at the beginning of the fiscal year. Any other things in the parking lot? Board drawn table?
I, uh, the only thing I have is these road maintenance, very important to ditch, the guys are doing a great job, Brooklyn Heights looks really good, they've done a good job up in there. They got the ditches lined with stone, so.
Thank you.
They're doing well.
And they're starting to mow, so that's good.
Yes, it is. They patched a lot of potholes for Memorial Day. We're good.
So I just wanna, was it Ed, who's been engaging people on Facebook and asking for these neglected areas, I just wanna say kudos, I mean, he's engaging the residents and asking stuff that's, I mean, I saw him the day he was doing up by River Street, and I, I didn't even know there was a sidewalk by the bridge up there that he uncovered, you know, he did the sign up on Scotch Hill, some other stuff, I don't know, I think he's.
Academy Street.
Going, I got a list going, doesn't he?
He cleaned up the triangle up by Stewart's. Now there's.
Talking about something by Howard's Garage, I think he said.
Yeah, the triangle right there that they're talking about.
They mowed that today.
Did they?
Oh, yeah, it's all complete.
Is he, is he a Rousseabout or is he part-time or what?
He's my part-time summer help.
Part-time summer help.
I'm calling him my roving cleaner, he's just, I wanted just to make sure downtown and the transfer station was clean, but then he just really took to it, he just. Yeah, he's doing great.
Do you know who that is?
I just gotta, I just have a quick question.
Oh, he does, that old gentleman?
Airport up at the, up at the, the old pavilion, I noticed that hadn't been mowed yet, I didn't know if that was something that we're gonna get to, or are we kinda leaving that this year on purpose for mowing May or something there?
Mowing the airport.
Around the pavilion up there.
Oh, no, that should be mowed, it's just not mowed yet, no, that'll be mowed. We were getting a lot of flack from, uh, from Facebook about the.
Bobolinks.
Bobolinks, yeah, so we let, we let the nesting happen this year.
Yeah.
And we'll mow after the, after the nests are gone.
I think it's sometime in June or something like that.
It is, it's later this, later next month. So, but around, around the pavilion, that should be mowed, so I will have them do that.
Maybe they just thought that they shouldn't mow because of that.
It's probably.
So the Navy got the wires crossed up, so.
Yeah.
Just a little explanation here, probably be good.
Sure.
Oh, excellent job to the town on Spring Fling, thank you to the Chamber for hosting that. Oh, great, great Memorial Day weekend in town, really showing off what, what we have, and thank you.
No, just, just wanna stay with, with Chad on, on the parade and every, I thought the people who worked the parade did a, did a pretty nice job. Uh, it was between, and, and it looked like vendors were up a little bit this year from last year, we still, we still are working our way back, but I thought everyone involved in, in the, in, in that organization between the Chamber and the folks who did the parade did an outstanding job, it was, it was very nice.
There was lots of vendors there, I'm not sure how they did, but there was lots of them.
Scotch Hill you got already, paving in the park you've got, if I could read that note, I'd ask about it. So we're good.
Perfect. Do we have financials?
I do. I do. I'll make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-six...
Wait a minute. Okay.
Pay the payroll of thirty-six thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
There was a late payroll that came in, so I'll make another motion to pay the payroll for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't believe I signed that one.
There's two places to sign.
Okay, on this one. Alright.
And I'll make a motion to pay the warrant for nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-two and eleven cents. There were some major, there were some major payments in school, building.
Second.
I'll second that, Mike.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And the checkbook status is one million four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Not for long.
No.
Not for long at all. Okay, do we have an executive session?
Yep. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under one DSA three thirteen eight three.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.